Stand for pledge. For the reasons you have described, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have someone here tonight. I think they'll do the roll call.
Mike, can you do the roll call first?
Asher, Mayor Morandi.
I am here.
Trustee Early.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Valado.
Here.
The gang's all here, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mike. Welcome everyone to our monthly meeting, our election night meeting. Hopefully, everyone's gotten out there and voted. I think it's a crucial election, not that they all don't seem to be, but this one more than others.
I've voted comments overall, like.
So hopefully, everyone's got out and voted, and we'll try to move this along quickly. So you can go hug your TVs, that's for the rest of the night, and pray that it goes your way, whichever that might be. So first, we have monthly reports. We don't have anything from recreation planning. Have a report submitted by Matt Francisco, Chair of the Planning Board. Old business. The Planning Board held a public hearing on Thursday, October 13th, on Two Depot Square, application for amended site plan for alterations to existing multifamily residential building from two dwelling units to four dwelling units. The subject property is known as Tax Map 48 dot 12 dash 2 dash 2 and is in the B1 Zone in National Historic District. The applicant submitted an amended amendment to their application before the hearing was to be closed at the following meeting. A new public hearing was scheduled for November 10th for the amended application for amended site plan for alterations to existing multifamily residential building from three dwelling units to three dwelling units and one retail space. In new business, applications were recently received for the following matters. First, Cedar Hudson, for an amended site plan to develop a new public overlook and improve the central gathering area in front of the historic Foundry Office Building. And two, the Cold Spring Apothecary, for an amended site plan to include the addition of beverage and food service. Let's see, planning, I have an ink from zoning, Town of Georgetown, Bob, anything for us?
Yeah, I've got a couple things. Last month, I did mention about the safeguard resolution. We're still looking at that. We did have the other side of the coin, the other people came in and discussed, our workshop last week, we had a packed house of people that were against the gun disorders. But again, right now, this is just something we're looking into. It's our attorneys here, and he's just looking at it to see if it's even feasible to do. We had Bob Candy over there, he came in and discussed his point of view, and he also gave his point of view as a district DA. So we'll have to take that into consider, very consider, serious consideration with what he has to say regarding that. Losborn Park Lot, I stopped by there this morning. They made some really good progress down here. They're on schedule. Only bad unfortunate thing right now, they're ready to bring the crushed stone in, and the state has not given the green light yet to bring that in. So hoping, they said it might be another two weeks. So I mean, they really basically should be done with the old excavation by Friday. Right now, there's a couple of big, large stones that they're hammering out here, but if they don't get this stolen, it's going to be basically, Park Lot will be at a standstill until the state gives us approval, we'll bring the stone in. So we're just waiting on that. Tomorrow night, we're meeting with our builder inspector to finalize the final bid packets for the Dally House. We all, it's all, looks really well, looks real good, but we're just putting the final touches on it, and hopefully next week, the bids should be ready to go out for that. Also, we're meeting with him tomorrow night to discuss further, get more details on his perspective about consolidating the building apartments with the town, with the village here as well. So as you know, he's fairly new, we really haven't discussed too much of that with him at this particular time, but we're going to bring it up tomorrow night with him. We're finalizing the budget. We're within our tax gap, we did very well, we'll probably be below that, it's a possibility we can get a tax break, possibility to share. So we're going to try to finalize that budget, should be next Wednesday evening. We also met with a lot of people from the Indian Brook Road, had a lot of concerns about the parking out there over the summer. As we indicated, two months ago, we did pass a resolution to give the law enforcement agency, to give them more power to ticket, which they did, they rode over 200 and something tickets down Indian Brook Road this summer, and towed quite a few cars, but doesn't seem to solve the problem. So we also had a state representative from the parks with us at that meeting as well, so we're going to try to work with some kind of solution, but it's kind of hard. I mean, there's only, you can ticket people, and they still come back, so maybe more and more tickets than gets on Facebook, people decide that it's not a good place to park the cars. But we're trying to work with them on that, something like that. Also, too, the Betty Bundy Memorial, the bench is ready, the bricks that I, in the process, there, I got the proofs all on them, so should have all of that finalized. We're going to try to get it in before winter. If we have good weather, I think we could get it done, trying to get that in. Also, too, we got a grant for $50,000 to replace the windows up in the town hall as well, so that, working on that as well.
How did you get the grant for the?
Came through Sue Serino, she's the one that had it together. She just said to apply for it to get it, and you know, Richard worked on it, I know Ron Gaynor, our lead engineer, helped that, worked on it as well with Tina, we got it, so.
Nice.
Do you need anybody at the meeting tomorrow night with discussion with the building inspector?
Yeah, you could, if you'd like to stop by, maybe, if you'd like to stop by, you probably could.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Stork District Review, don't have anything, and Kathleen's not here, so. Putnam County, nothing there. Cold Spring Boat Club, did we discuss our meeting or no? That's unholdably.
Yeah, I think so.
We are in, we are having conversations, or we had one meeting with the Boat Club with regards to their lease, so we've started talks on that. One thing that has come up, if we do rent that, if we do rent to them and receive monies from them, which we aren't right now, then we'd have to pay taxes, so we have to put that into consideration when, you know, when we're deciding on the amount and how to move forward. So that was something that we just learned recently, so we didn't have our second meeting with them, but we've informed them of that information, and we'll move ahead on that. Fire company?
There is no report from.
Okay. Nothing from the parking committee either. Tree Advisory Board, Jen?
I'll make up for all of those.
Okay, you're a lot of time.
In October, the Tree Advisory Board has been very busy. We had installed at no cost to the village granite paver surrounds on two trees adjacent to the Sunoco Station near the soft light, trees that were getting flooded by the runoff from the Sunoco Station. It's around $900 value to the village, and we earn materials that first donate, that we secure through donation. We researched and secured for the village five Balden Berlett trees at a steep savings because it's the end of the season, and I get to go around and wheel and deal for us. We only have $500 in the general fund for new tree planting, and I spent that, but I got five trees. Plus, I got someone to donate two more trees, so we have seven trees to plant this fall, and they'll be going in the next few weeks. I met with our new highway supervisor, Chris Hyatt, to coordinate this. Next month, we're also cooperating, Chris is helping, with Haldane Endorman digging of five young but pretty big trees that are in the way of their new parking lot area that they put in, and we saved them, and we're going to move them once all the leaves come off of them to the streets in the village and to the Haldane property. Two of them aren't really suitable for street trees, so we're going to need Haldane, too. And the ground street, Haldane, and our highway department have agreed to collaborate on that project. We're next, what else? This month, as you guys know, because I sent an email, we led a group of Haldane seventh graders up and down Main Street on one day for their middle school service project. It was one of several sites in the village that they, the seventh graders at Haldane went out and volunteered. They picked up trash and weeded, and they also planted a small street card garden in a previously blacktopped public way right adjacent to Capotino. You'll see, the phase one of that planting is in now. It used to be blacktopped, and then had you take it up, and now we're planting it, and we'll, next spring, we'll spiff it up a little bit more.
Fantastic.
And the kids were really helpful. We'd like to thank the students for their service to our community. We're also doing ongoing work with the tree management plan, grants, a tree walking tour. But most importantly, the handout that I gave you guys, we finalized plans for phase one of the village's beautification zone project on Main Street. And what you have in your hands is sort of a little visual summary of what phase one involves. Decorative painted steel tree pit surrounds, which we've gotten three or four different bids on, and we will recommend to you, once this fund is ready to be spent, to go with the lowest bid. Permeable brass covers, two new trees, garden plantings in a 50-foot run adjacent to 93 through 91 Main Street and Village Hall. So it's the area that has the gravel on it right now, like the stone is. We hope to have phase one substantially completed this fall, early winter. We're going to be planting the trees at least because we have those. And as soon as all the donations actually come in, we'll start with the surrounds. We've raised 50% of a total budget of $3,500 for this one project already, in pledges from private donors. But there is a catch. The Tree Board requests that the village commit some beautification funds to this project, and that's what I'd like to ask you guys to do tonight. In addition to the labor that the highway department will spend planting the two trees, so that this is a true, this project is the kickoff of a true community partnership. I've invited the Chamber and other organizations to come on board as sponsors for future. There's six of these zones total, this is the first one. This phase one of this project is going to set the tone for fundraising for the people who are working to do the fundraising for the rest of the project, the other five zones throughout the village. And if the village commit funds, I think it will see a smart return on its investment. I think I've talked individually to some of you about this, but many people are hesitant to donate money to the village for projects like this. I personally, in fundraising for this, have had several promises if the village shows commitment to the project. So the 50% fundraising is contingent on the village kicking in something to help jumpstart this project, not from every funder, but from a few people. They're kind of waiting to see if the village is serious about this project before they write their checks. There, today, are no checks that Merritt has received yet. I just have promises, and I'm waiting to go get the checks from everybody, basically. So I'm asking you for a relatively small amount of money, $1,000 of the $3,500 budget for this phase one. If you can commit this and find it, I know there's a $1,200 line in the general fund for beautification that Dave has told me is already earmarked for other things, but if there's a way to find here and there that much money, we, the Tree Board, will commit to raising the rest, so. Plus, you'll get a lot more goodwill out of it in the future for these other zones. We're starting organizing a sponsor tree guard program so people can donate money for a tree guard and have a little dedication plaque or something on it. And those tree guards cost anywhere between $650 to $1,200, depending on how big the pit is. That's the lowest bid that we've received, and a local person that can fabricate them. So you'll get a sense of like, both grand scope, we want to do every tree on Main Street in the next 10 years or something, that's what we're up against, basically. So I'm trying to sort of get a lot of good energy behind this project, because it's not something that I think everybody can get behind. And based on the support and the feedback I've gotten so far, I think it's something that's really exciting. People are excited about it. It's just something good and positive that we can do in the village, in addition to the Main Street sidewalk project, which is there and installed, and we need to sort of create the rest of them, little pieces of it. Thanks.
Jen, if I were to write a letter to thank the kids, where would that go?
You can send it to Julia Smith in.
And is she, I don't know where, what is she now? Did you exchange?
She's the principal of the middle school, I think, now, so yeah. Thank you for you and Fran stopping to say, they were very tickled by that, when they were on the street, so thank you guys for that. And I'm not going to stay for discussion unless you guys want to discuss this $1,000 request now, because I have a.
When do you need the commitment, Jen?
I need it as soon as I can. I have a guy ready to make the guards, and I have, I want to order the paper, grass paper product, and so I'm waiting, I need to start getting actual checks from people. So if you could let me know in the next week or something, and then you have to do some research into the budget, then either year or year and a, I'd appreciate it.
In looking at the sketch here, the beautification areas are, it's three-sided.
Three-sided, yeah.
Okay, so that when people get out of their cars, they, they don't fall into, or don't get tripped up by the.
Correct. We're doing the same standards that New York City uses, which I felt was a fair, I mean, with the pedestrian traffic there and the cars, which is a three-sided tree guard, and the tree guard ends one foot from the curb, so it's also inset a little bit, so that on that side, it's out of the way as much as possible. And I coordinated with Tony Phillips on, there's a handicap parking spot going in in that location, and we're making sure we plant the new trees not right where the handicap parking spot is going to be in the way of, so.
Well, we may, we may have to move the handicap spot. New York State guidelines, New York State has, Department of Transportation has guidelines for the length of the handicap parking space and a buffer adjacent to it, either in the front or the back. They also have requirements, sorry, recommendations for no parking zones adjacent to crosswalks. And we'll have the two crosswalks across Main Street, so trying to figure out the most effective use of the space, combining potentially the crosswalk buffer zone with the handicap buffer zone, so that we overlap and don't have to count, double count the space and not have more, no parking areas.
Great. Well, I think that's what the park committee was telling me about, right? There's 18 feet buffer zone, and then a 15-foot space, has that changed?
Well, as it turns out, the New York State recommended is 20 feet on either side of.
But it is a recommendation.
It is a recommendation, so.
We have a little leeway.
Before, Marie, before we do the final this, then I'll just make sure we have final that.
Yeah, I've been trying to meet with Chris Hyatt, so that we can map it out.
Okay, I mean, it's a recommendation.
I understand it's a recommendation, but you don't want, you want six to 10 feet on either side of the crosswalk, and the crosswalks are on the corner for the.
I understand the reason, I just, a foot's going to matter, but the project in jeopardy over it.
Well, I don't think the project's in jeopardy, I think we need to, we're very safe.
Okay, well, I'll make sure to check back with you, I'm sure you guys will authorize it all.
Email, email split.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen, thanks for all your work, Jen. Marie Code update.
Oh, yeah. The Code Update Committee held two meetings in October. There are seven topics in the next category of appearance. Each topic has been assigned to a committee member. The committee continued outline preparation and research into each topic. The fifth quarterly progress report was submitted on schedule to NYSERDA. The first reimbursement request is awaiting one additional invoice before submission. NYSERDA has reviewed the request and is in agreement with the content and totals. I have been waiting for a response from NYSERDA since October 27th. She was supposed to call today, she hasn't called, so trying to get that in there and going.
Okay, thank you, Marie. Next on the agenda was the financial report, but I was talking to Michelle, our treasurer this week, and she requested to move it to the 22nd, the third meeting of the month. This way, she'll have more data that she can, you know, add to the report and sort of be more complete, so we agreed, I agreed to move that. So we'll be moving just the financial report like every month on the third meeting, or the fourth week of the month. So that meeting will be the 22nd. Greg? Greg's been having fun lately?
Yeah.
As always. We start with the wastewater report. Regarding West Street Pump Station, the mitigation project, we're down to the point where the only left is the fence enclosures, I spoke about it last month, that we had an issue with, you know, a large, couple of proposals for, for getting both enclosures done. We dropped the new street, which is the smaller of the two, upstreet. Mayor Morandi has offered assistance in us getting that done in-house, so that's, that's going to help us out and cut down on the overall number. We are applying to FEMA for a time extension through December because the contractor that we were going to work with had some things coming up, but you know, I don't really know what it was, but you can call it for December, but not November 13th is our, not a deadline, but that was the initial date that we said we'd be done by, so you know, we're asking for them to push it off for us for a month so we can, you know, really be done with it. So that's where we stand on that. And then, this is kind of through both lines, a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to meet with Trustees Murphy and Valado to begin discussions concerning staffing and licensing of our water and wastewater facilities and personnel. We had a productive first session, which consisted of outlining the functions and needs for both facilities with regard to regulatory and daily operations and maintenance requirements. And I look forward to continuing the discussion as we, you know, move into more depth on it, really, you know, working toward a good end. No, that's that one. Not a fun. The water meter replacement project. Installations of the new water meters were scheduled to begin this week. However, an issue has arisen between the contractor and the Putnam County Plumbing Board. Per terms of the signed contract for our project, East National Water LLC was to employ a county licensed plumber for the meter swap outs. Our signed documents indicated that they had made such arrangements. Late last week, a complaint was made with the plumbing board that unlicensed personnel would be performing the plumbing work, which violates their code. East National's position is that they had planned to utilize a licensed plumber in the event that a valve needed replacing or any actual change in plumbing needed to occur, but that the straight swap out of a meter for a meter with nothing happening other than loosening a nut, removing the unit, putting a new one in, they considered that to be incidental in their view. Further, due to the highly technical aspect of the cellular endpoint activations, data recording and submission to satisfy terms of the contract, East National feel that their specially trained personnel are the ones that they need there for the task. It's something that, it's just transpired starting last Wednesday. Been in contact with our engineer and then also with John First to get their input on, you know, how we could facilitate, if there was a way for us to try to, you know, mediate the concerns between the board and the contractor. As yet, nothing has changed. It is ultimately East National's responsibility per their contract, which they signed with us, to satisfy all the terms, and if that means they've got to hire those plumbers to do the work instead of their guys, or in addition to their guys, you know, the bottom line, it's, it's their responsibility right now. We were just trying to find a way to kind of, if there was a way for us to help get involved, to facilitate, because we were supposed to start this week, we're now, starting now, a week behind, and you know, we're coming into holidays and winter and all this stuff, so no delay is a good delay for us right now. And we're sitting on $120,000 worth of inventory that we'd like to get installed.
Does that change their price?
You know, it's not, the way it is right now is the contract as is, and the bid that was, you know, awarded and the contract signed was for an amount, and so I don't really know what's going to happen. You know, the time will tell, and we're hoping it's going to tell quickly, because you know, every day we lose is just not helping us. Well, there's two interesting parts to this, one is that they will allow our, our workers, our crew to actually, to swap out. I could go into any home right now, and I could change out the meter myself, and I don't need any qualifications, other than, that's what we're doing, made the appointment to do it. But the contractor that we have, you know, brought in, that we've vetted and found that they're, you know, they're doing 4,000 meters in Dutchess County, you know, it's, it's all right seemingly everywhere else, but it's not going to be okay here, so you know, we're hoping there's some way to make everybody happy.
When you say here, you mean Putnam County?
Putnam County. Oh, it's time. Putnam County. So we're not, you know, we just, I'm not exactly sure where things stand right now. You know, we were hoping they'd be installed, and they made appointments, people have called in, and the appointments were made, and they were ready to start yesterday, and now they're not. So we'll keep you apprised as things develop, hopefully quickly. Also, you scheduled a meeting, which they canceled, right? The plumbing board's meeting on Thursday night, we were looking to go there to basically explain the case, and the response was, they really only deal with the contractors who are in violation. They don't deal preemptively, apparently, which is what we were trying to do, was try to explain, you know, what the project entailed and how, you know, potentially incidental the, the work is. Because out of an hour's work in your home, 10 minutes of it is going to be replacing the meter. The rest of it is all the technology, starting, activating the endpoint, doing all the wiring, you know, and all the data collection that happens, you know, it's not something that, first of all, we did this thing publicly, and anyone in the county could have bid this job, and nobody did. We got two bids for the whole thing, so it's not as if we did something where we were trying to exclude anybody. So you know, it seems, I don't know, whatever it takes, we'll get there.
Why are you allowed to do it, though?
As a, as employee of the village water department, it's.
On the county.
Apparently acceptable. We don't have the time to do it.
Why? I know that.
Just in case. So, yeah, so again, time will tell on that, and along with that, actually, I'm going to just jump ahead, I was going to talk about the upper dam, but almost, well, coincidentally with that, we had a resident from, I think it was around the Constitution Drive area, someone got a letter in the mail, and it had to do with water service line ownership, and it looked very official, and that it might actually have come from the village or been associated with the village, and especially since the water meter stuff is going out there now, we just want to say that, other than the water meter replacement project, we have nothing else that's, that's being distributed. I think it's an insurance thing, where you can, you know, insure your water line and sewer line in case they were to break in the street. I've heard of it in the past, but this is, you know, in the last couple days, a resident received something like that, so we may even put an email blast out there just saying, you know, this is not in conjunction. It's not to say that there's anything wrong with it, it's just for anyone to decide whether they want to do it, but it's just not anything that we're endorsing, all right? And it's not coming from us.
Should probably also put it on the website.
Yeah, okay. Facebook, the whole thing.
Shoot us an email.
Yeah.
Mary, I'll get it up.
And then, lastly, the upper dam repair, the first phase of the design project has begun, which involves inspections and evaluation of the conditions, as well as access, survey, and review of all documentation on file. I'm going to be bringing one or two of their guys up to the upper dam on Thursday to begin the process and show them how to get up there and get access, and where we have everything going on, so. So that's all beginning, and you know, as that moves along, we'll keep you updated.
Is the voluntary ban still in effect?
We're at 77%, and you know, that's not great, but it's also a cooler time of year, we're using a lot less water, we're down from this time last year, we're down 11.4%. You know, so I wouldn't be worried, and they actually need the levels down to look at the dam anyway, so, you know, I, no one's really doing anything excessive right now. We would still want people to always conserve, let's just say, let's do that every day.
Anything else?
For Greg? Thanks, Greg.
Thank you very much.
If you need, let us know. Code enforcement report from Bob Jarski, our enforcer. Permits issued eight, alarms one, building and fire, plus complaint inspections 15, certificate of occupancy compliance issued four, complaints violations 10, referrals seven, annual fire safety zero, tri-annual fire safety maintenance inspection zero, noise ordinance waiver zero, record searches four, building and fire inspector plan reviews one. New matters before code enforcement, 20 September, dumpster pad permits done, foils on, meetings and appointments 19, fees collected September 2016, $6,885. Other matters, zero, or I don't know what that actually means, because this stuff listed, was that?
Seven, other matters are seven. He left the number out.
Well, okay, seven. I did, there is concern about our fire inspections, or lack thereof. I did have a meeting with Bill and went over, you know, the need to start pursuing these, and which Bill has started on, and has a plan laid out, so one thing we might want to put on the website is that, you know, we maybe coordinate with Bill that, you know, the fire inspectors will be starting up again. There is a fee associated with this, people should know that. Anyway, we should talk, we should talk to Bill a little bit and get that out there, because he was, you know, people aren't aware of that, that there is a fee for this service.
Is that just for businesses, or is that for homes, or is that for everybody?
I think it's for businesses and multifamily units, and you know, I don't think it's single family, but I'm not sure. Definitely multifamily, anything where there's exits or fire alarms or fire, you know, smoke detectors needed. So we're working on that and trying to get, you know, start, start working that back in. There is a line item for it, it's just fallen to the wayside with everything else going on. So did have a discussion, and Bill has started working on it, starting down in Hudson House, there was a complaint down there, so he's working on that, and hopefully, we'll get things back in order and start doing regular, you know, fire inspections.
or figure a way to do that. So that is happening. Do not have a report from the highway. Police report, I do not have either. Justice report, fines forfeited, bail spent at least $5,232. Parking tickets, $4,247. Civil fees, under 55. Mandatory state surcharges, $3,340. Total of $12,974. Respectfully submitted by Thomas J. Costello, Village Justice. Report, mayor and board trustees. Would you like to start, Steve?
Sure. I have, in reference to the anchorages along the Hudson, which we're signing a resolution for tonight, or what we're on. But if anybody in the village wants to include a letter or any kind of comment along with what we're going to be sending to DC, the due date for that would be the 2nd of December. And I guess we could bring the letters to Village Hall, or, would it be easy to email them here? I'm not sure how that works.
They probably should be in sealed envelopes.
Yeah.
And marked on the outside what they're for, so Mary doesn't have to open them.
Okay. I'll talk to Mary about that. And then we'll include them with what we're sending at that time. That's it.
Fran?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Murray?
Nothing.
Hello?
Hi. With your suggestion that you made to take a careful look at the Tarrytown film for this, I am completely rewriting what I've done for it. It was inspiring.
They have good code writers down there.
They are. So I'm kind of rehashing the entire thing, hopefully I'll have it by the next workshop.
Okay. Good. Let's see, I said a few things, kind of a follow-up from the last meeting I was at, a couple of weeks ago. One regarding the Halloween, there was concerns about the parade, and I talked to the numbers of people also on Parish Street and notifications of street closures. So I did talk to Officer Kane and expressed my concern and the villages, that we needed more notification going forward. So hopefully next year, if they're going to block off roads or whatever, we'll give plenty of notice to anyone on the streets where those closures are. There was concern that there were horses mingling with people in the parade, kids, and what if something were to spook them or whatever? So I think we need to, with the application made for the parade, we should know what actually, who's going to be in the parade, or something like horses, we should be notified. And as safety precaution, I think they should be in a separate area, maybe. But that wasn't done. So it's a little loose as far as the application goes, I think we should tighten that up a little, just so we know what to expect. If somebody wants to do a float or something, we should know about it, and not just have that happen. So I did follow up with Officer Kane on that. James Hartford had a complaint about a water runoff on his property. I did go up and check it out with Steve, and the whole property drains right to the corner, which empties out on our property, and which then shoots across to James's property. So it is a problem. And so I sent all the information to our attorney to see what recourse we had, or who was actually responsible. Since it's all their runoff and there's no drainage on their property, if it's their problem, or if it comes on ours, is it then our to deal with? So we're moving forward with that. Haven't heard back from John yet, but I think it's kind of a legal matter, who's responsible?
The gas station's property that's draining, right? Not James's.
Yeah, no, yeah, only gas station property. It's all blacktop, and everything is pitching in a way that goes right to the corner, right where we have a tree bed, which also kind of blocks it, it's like a dam, and that's our tree bed. It's like railroad ties, pretty much. And that's stopping the water and funneling it straight across. So working on that. Emergency services, I did talk to Steve Smith, who just talked in general about the incident down at the quarry, and the emergency service volunteer that got hit. And we just had, just kind of a conversation on that. I did contact the scene of Hudson, and there's a public, or there's a meeting tomorrow, a steering committee meeting, which I'll attend and bring up all the concerns as far as, from the emergency services point of view, and also our concerns of abuse of our services, and the concerns for parking on the road, which is outside of jurisdiction, but I think it should be brought to their attention a little bit more. I'm sure they're aware of it, and I think she said that, Amy said that, they had been hearing more complaints on that. So I'll follow up with that. There is a public meeting at Duchess Manor, I think the following week. Does anyone know the 19th?
Monday, the 14th.
14th, at Duchess Manor. So people that are concerned with the volume of tourists or anything connected with the Fjord Trail, you might want to stop by there. I should, the Fjord Trail isn't really the problem in a way. I mean, the problem is right now, and the tourists are right now, and the people that are hiking is right now, and the Fjord Trail's not even in existence. So if anything, the Fjord Trail may help everything, if they start controlling, if they control parking, if they control, I'm not sure how you control people coming off the trains, or a bigger brain than mine. I'm not sure how you do that. But I will make the concerns known. There were complaints from people on Fair Street, the volume of people walking up and down there, it's just a stream. So I'll bring those to the attention. And like I said, the 14th at Duchess Manor. I do have a few things which I guess fall under correspondence, but I'll read them. One kind of, one's from Central Hudson, and there was something on Facebook also on this, where it's an alert to customers, there's a scam going out around, I guess, a few people hit with. And this is from Central Hudson, warns of payment scams. Central Hudson alerting customers of bill payment scams targeting its customers. This is the latest of many scams taking place across New York and other parts of the country. And we urge our customers to be vigilant in protecting themselves and their account information. Receiving reports of customers being contacted by telephone by individuals claiming to represent Central Hudson, stating that if the customer does not make an immediate payment, services will be disconnected. Explain that the caller then directs them to pay their utility bills using a prepaid card purchased at a pharmacy or convenience store. In this particular scam, the caller identification or caller ID number appearing on the victim's telephone mimics that of a Central Hudson number. And the caller also provides a telephone number for return, which when reached utilizes a re-recording of Central Hudson's upfront message. Central Hudson would never request a bill payment in this way. Customers are advised that thieves may alter their caller ID in order to present false names and telephone number. Although some customers may see Central Hudson's name or telephone number displayed, these calls are not originating here. If there is any uncertainty, customers should hang up and call Central Hudson at 845-452-2700 for confirmation, and disregard telephone numbers provided to return callers. But I thought that was important to read. Let's see, we received also from, this is the stuff that I received today or looked up, Putnam County Bureau of Emergency Services sent to the Putnam County Fire Chiefs, please be advised that due to the dry conditions that exist due in lack of rain in Putnam County, I am ordering that all open burning be banned until further notice. This notice applies to the burning, open burning of brush and branches. It does not apply to small campfires and patio fire pits. Any department dispatched to an open burn should extinguish the fire and advise the homeowner of the ban. Anyone failing to comply with the ban may be subject to fine by the local jurisdiction having authority.
How long is that being in for, you said?
How long is it in effect? It's open-ended, doesn't say. Probably till the snow flies, I don't know. They're probably concerned people like turning leaves. The other thing, I guess we're into correspondence now, those are a few things that I had received. So the last thing on correspondence, just kind of segue into that, is a request from Charlie Norton, a highway employee, requesting two weeks vacation pay. I'd like to make a motion to approve requests for vacation pay from Charles Norton on the condition that he has the two weeks requested. I'm not sure if Michelle's okay this, so as long as he has the weeks, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor? Old business, we have discussion of a generic vessel docking agreement, a reason we're working on, so.
Yeah. So what the docking agreement does is it essentially changes the fees from what had been in effect prior to the middle of the summer, when we negotiated a different fee with C Street. And what this does is it applies that fee to all vessels that wish to dock, the Cold Spring Dock. So it's $6 per foot per day if you come in, drop your guests, and leave, and $8 a foot per day if you come in and leave your vessel docked at the dock for that amount of time. What I would like to recommend is that in number two on the second page, sorry, number two on the second page, amendment to fee schedule and duration of docking, prior to A, I'd like to insert there, payment is due at least one week prior to the scheduled docking date, left paren, S, right paren. And what that said, what I mean to do there, what the intent there, is that the village would receive the payment prior to the docking of the vessel.
Right now, most of the people do pay that way. C Street seems to be on their own kind of schedule, so that's one reason to include that.
Is this going to be for any size vessel?
It's per foot.
For any size?
Yes, any size vessel. There are situations where the fee is waived. So for example, the Clearwater, we do not charge the Clearwater when they dock. They are a historical vessel, and they have an environmental purpose. I believe there's, there may have been another vessel that we didn't charge. I don't remember. So I'd like to recommend that with that amendment, that this be the MOU that the village uses going forward for vessels at the dock.
So you're making that motion?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion that this MOU, as amended, be accepted by the village.
Second back. Is there going to be a paragraph about insurance in this, or is that going to be separate?
There's nothing here now, Fran?
I don't think so, and I'm sorry if I missed it.
I know that insurance...
Is there something about the docking permit itself? Because it would be in the docking term.
I'll have to go back, Fran, to those things which are referenced in here. And I will follow up with everyone.
Okay. Anything else?
So, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's something in their thing that they have to fill out, you know, the application, then it would be in the application.
It's either in the application or in the village code.
Right.
Yeah, adherence to village code.
What's that?
Inherence to village code on page two. It's listed as number one.
Yes. The village code is identified in here in a number of cases.
I'll have to take care of that.
Okay, but I will get back to you on that.
Okay. The second is approval contract, Stephen Tilly, which I understand we did in my absence last week.
October 25th.
October 25th. There was a, there were a couple of errors on it. Was it the number, Murray?
If I may, in the rider, in the first whereas paragraph, the number was incorrect. And in the fourth whereas paragraph, the date of the agreement was incorrect. What you have in front of you has the correct, the two corrections.
So we will do this once again, so I did, it's just a motion to authorize me to sign this document, the rider, the letter of agreement, so I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That has to be noted, I do that tomorrow. Let's see. Next is new business, discussion of OML resolution. It was a resolution dated, the resolution was number 20, 2014. And basically, what it did was it brought it...
Formalized, didn't it?
What's that?
It formalized what the local implementation of the open meeting law was.
Exactly. Well, and it went one step beyond open meetings. Open meeting laws don't require agendas, and I don't believe they do for committees. So what this did was it then required all committees and boards to have agendas. You know, it wasn't, in the OML, it says practicable, another word.
As practicable.
Practicable.
Very easy to say.
Which gives us some leeway. In this resolution, it gives no leeway. And so what I'd like to do is read, amend this resolution at our next meeting, if everyone agrees, so that it reads the same as the OML. We'll still require the committees to have agendas, but it's not going to be a complete requirement. It's when they can, if something happens to come up, then it doesn't get done. An instance would be actually our board meetings, and the amount of time Mary has to get everything together, there might be one item missing on that. And so according to this, we wouldn't actually, you know, it would be a problem. So we'd like, I'd like to amend this so that there is some leeway. We still believe it's, I believe it's important to have the agendas, but every now and then there's something that is missing on it, so it'd give a little leeway. Obviously, open meetings laws considered the same thing and thought that was wise, so I think we should follow up with them. So is anyone, everyone okay with that? We'll have a resolution for next meeting? Next, we have a resolution opposing the Coast Guard anchorage of commercial vessels. And Mary, she contacted Tina at the town hall, who had just completed a resolution. And so we tweaked it a bit, and that's what we have before us, is resolution number 25, 2016, opposing Coast Guard anchorage. Whereas in June 2016, the US Coast Guard announces that it was soliciting comments and concerns from the public on a proposal to establish a large number of anchorage grounds for commercial vessels in the Hudson River. And whereas research shows that habitats of some fish have been affected by previous anchorage sites, an anchored boat containing crude oil and petroleum products could catch fire or spill toxic oil into the river. The health of communities that use the Hudson River for drinking water could be threatened. These sites would adversely affect the scenic beauty of our region, and at least three locations vessels would block the view from popular tourist attractions. Moreover, many in our community are concerned about the impact of constant noise, light and smoke from anchored boats, as many of the proposed sites are near homes and businesses. And whereas the said proposal would create health, safety, environment... environmental and economic problems for Hudson River communities. Now therefore being resolved, that the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees hereby states its opposition to the proposed anchorage and urges the US Coast Guard to conduct public meetings and include this document as a statement of the Village of Cold Spring Board's position. It's a roll call vote.
You want to?
Do you have discussion? I'll make a motion to, to sign the resolution opposing the Coast Guard anchorage of commercial vessels.
Second.
We have a second from Marie. Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Valoto?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Let's see what we have here. Next is the application for the Turkey Trot. This is a, this is a race that they hold, I think it's 5K race that they hold every year. It's in memory of a resident from Philstown Manor. Megan Cutter, or as known as many, Megan Bericchio, has started this a number of years ago, happens every year. There were a few little problems one year about markings, which were corrected that were on the road. I think that's the only problem there ever was. About 75 to 100 people. So, everything else is in order here. There's insurance and the route, which will go to the police. So, I'll make a motion to permit this, the 5K race.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next, I think, make a motion to approve batch 3808 in the amount of $28,251.90.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
What was the dollar amount they can date?
What's that?
What was the dollar amount? Thank you very much.
Thanks. We'll have the approval of minutes. Board of Trust, Board of Trustees Workshop Meeting, October 25th. I have a motion to.
So moved.
Seven.
Is that the one that was not asked?
Yes, that's the one you're on.
All in favor?
You can't vote.
Yes, I know that. All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. Is that the only one that's there?
That's the only one.
Okay. Let's see. There's one other thing, just I left the, this renewable energy Highlands pamphlet in your, in your packet. So, if you could take a look at them. Mike Rao, who's heading this or working with this, with this group, would like to do a presentation at our next meeting. So, bone up a little on it, that would be good. If you have any questions, you can get them to, you know, in advance.
When, Steve, when are we going to see the budget for the fire company?
I've requested it several times. I haven't heard anything back. But I'm going to their meeting again in.
When's their next meeting?
Two weeks. Three weeks.
Three weeks gets us into December.
Well, they have one, their meeting is, you're right. By the time, it would be the last weekend or a week and Thanksgiving, after Thanksgiving. So, that would be the end of November.
So, if we don't see it, does that mean we don't have to pay them anything?
I don't know how that works.
Sounds like a plan.
I'll go with that working assumption.
All right, sounds like a plan.
I would trust them.
They already presented to the Philistown. I don't understand what the problem is.
Philistown didn't ask them. We're asking.
No, well, Philistown.
Doesn't ask.
Just go. I don't understand. Okay.
I'll get you an answer.
We want to see their budget.
I know.
I don't want a date, I want a budget.
We should send something out, let Mary send something, another request. One other thing out of the budget, we were, I sent an email to Michelle and asked what she thought about when we wanted to start the budget discussions a little earlier and get reports and kind of start working with the different departments. She suggested the middle of December would be a good time because it would give more time, there'd be more data also to work on and see where we are this year.
Middle of December for what? To ask them for their input?
To start gathering, yes.
So, if we, if we want their input in the middle of December, got to tell them now.
No, we want to ask them.
We want their, we want your input in a month.
No, Michelle says she wants us to ask them in December so that we get it. She wants, she, her comment was that, I think she, they would have a better look at more numbers if we waited until the middle of December.
The only, what they're going to have is the financial report from Michelle as of the end of October. And they will have that last week in November.
They should know what they spent up to that point.
Yeah, they probably have, don't. They, they need the report to see that. So, it seems to me that that's when they get asked.
I asked Michelle, and this is what Michelle tells me. I would think that as a treasurer, she might.
But I don't see what waiting two weeks does.
It's not that we're going to start. Maybe we just give them.
What do you mean by wait two minutes? Two weeks?
We, we get her report. We are going to have it two weeks from tonight.
Would you like to send, ask her?
Sure.
This was her recommendation. She said the state actually recommends you start in February, which.
That's too late. We know that's too late.
I mean, that to me.
I'm just saying.
That to me doesn't mean start the discussions. That to me, more or less, must mean, you know, looking at actual numbers. I mean, for example, the tree committee needs a bigger budget, you know, because of all the things that we've seen this year that come up. So, they're going to, they need to come up with, you know, with some numbers of what they're going to need next year.
What the tree committee needs is more money for repairing trees. What they're asking for is more money to make the trees.
Well, I understand.
As well.
I understand that, but they're also going to need money to take down trees that are falling on our heads, that kind, that kind of things. Those are the kinds of things that.
Right. I agree. They, they need more money for removal and pruning of trees.
So, I think discussions with, and I'd almost like to see us break out and talk to different committees. So, you know, so for example, if you, if you were speaking to Jen, you'd say, you know, you know, give me your wish list of everything that you want, but equally, so trees is a priority and beautifying may not be able to have the money for it, you know?
My only point is that the first budget they're going to see is the budget that we get, sorry, the first financial report they're going to see is the October 31st report, which we are going to see on the 4th Tuesday of the month. So, that should go out to all departments. The 4th Tuesday of, 4th Tuesday in the month of November, not a lot gets done in December. So, here's, here's what was spent in the, in the first six months of the year. What do you propose be your budget for 2017, 2018? And, and please get that back to me by the middle of January. That gives them six weeks.
I mean, even if we.
To think about it.
Because, I mean, even when Steve and I met with Rec, you know, tried to explain to Jeff, don't just tell us you need $7,000, you need to tell us what you need money for, you know? The whole discussion we had this year about, he needed $7,000 for a roof that was already fixed or something to that. But, so we need, we need to get them more, you know, I mean, some people are better at doing budgets than others. All the time.
Okay. Let's touch base with Michelle. I, I don't care when we start, or if we want to send a notice out after we have that meeting, that's fine, too. I, I just was going on her recommendation. And so, we can gather that information and we can start working on it, asking, like I think, like Fran said, there should be what you're budget for. And I think, like, highways should be showing us replacement schedules. We should, we should know, you know, we should have information about what they have and, you know, how, why they're asking some money, so. Anything else? Public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good waiting.